Blue LA Program in collaboration with the city and Los Angeles Department of Transportation.
Reserve the car for a day or for a few hours so you can run around and you're helping to keep the environment clean while you're at it because they're all electric.
These cars are specifically intended for car sharing. They get up to 125 miles per charge and fit up to four passengers. And part of the effort is in making it accessible to underserved communities.
Once you have registered to the service, you'll receive a contactless card or you can either way use your tap card and then access the car and you rent it. So as soon as you are unplugging the cable from the car, you're ready to go. You start your rental and to end it, you can go and drop the car at any other compatible station.
And the cost? It varies from $9 an hour to $12 an hour depending on if you qualify for a low-income household.
I think it's really great for the air, you know, the environment. It's really, this is a good ideal. This is excellent.
Currently, Blue LA is available through central Los Angeles with plans for expanding all throughout the city. For more information or to sign up, check out bluela.com or email contact@bluela.com.
Blue LA also offers 24/7 customer service and is currently offering introductory rates. Well, sure, we need more affordable and homeless housing, but how would you feel if your neighborhood was forced to carry much of the load? Well, many residents in Lincoln Heights say it's unfair. As Gil Reyes reports, local leaders want to clear the confusion about a possible plan to convert area parking lots.
Is new affordable and homeless housing coming to Lincoln Heights? At the first of several community meetings, some say not in my neighborhood under the current conditions.
I don't refuse the homelessness problem. I don't refuse affordable housing. I refuse the fact that it's not being spread equally throughout the neighborhoods. And the burden is going to lie solely on Lincoln Heights.
The city has a preliminary plan to transform 12 city-owned lots into affordable and homeless housing. Almost half of these sites, parking lots, are located in Lincoln Heights around North Broadway. Area residents don't think that's fair, but again, it's not a done deal.
Part of this process is talking to the community about the type of housing that they want here in Lincoln Heights. So nothing set in stone. There's no signed contract. All we have is a contract with the developer and an idea to build five lots. That's it.
Residents are also upset that two developers received contracts with no input from the public. Developers addressed the crowd.
I put built housing for seniors and I have also built supportive housing. We build all types of housing as is appropriate for the, for our city right now that is facing a crisis.
Lincoln Heights Councilman Gilbert Sadio also chairs the Housing Committee. He's responsible for helping to house LA's unsheltered, whose numbers are surging.
Let me finally applaud those who share a vision. A vision that believes that all people deserve a right to housing.
Businesses are also concerned about losing parking in neighborhoods where parking is already scarce. More community meetings are set for the coming months. In Lincoln Heights, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The mayor has made affordable and homeless housing priorities. City council members have pledged to create 222 new units of supportive housing in each of their respective districts. Relief has arrived for several lucky families who were at risk of being priced out of the neighborhood. Gil Reyes reports on a new affordable housing complex in Boyle Heights.
For longtime East Side residents struggling to get by, this is an upgrade. The Cielito Lindo Apartments have opened.
100% affordable housing for 50 families on LA's east side in Boyle Heights.
And the most exciting part was when they told me how much the rent was.
At its grand opening, Marta Silva, a single mom, tells the crowd that her new apartment is both better looking and more affordable than her old one. Tenants selected to move in are of low income. Rents are reasonable though, between $500 to $1,000 a month. Cielito Lindo was developed by the East LA Community Corporation. City leaders are excited.
My family's from Boyle Heights. I want to see the same rich Boyle Heights that was a gateway for so many people, whether it's immigrants or migrants from other places. And this ensures the stability of the community for a long time to come.
It took some heavy lifting. The complex sits where the old Peabody Worden House used to be on First and Soto Streets. Two years ago, crews moved the home built in 1895 across the street to save it from demolition, appeasing preservationists.
This is a, a transportation hub. We have the new gold line. We have about eight different bus lanes that come through here. So it's, it's located in a great area because it's next to transportation. We're building density and also providing support to families who need it. It's a win-win all around. We got to do more of these.
In Boyle Heights, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Two more buildings will be added to the complex. Councilman Weesar says his district has been a leader in creating affordable housing. Around 1,000 units have popped up in his district over the past decade. Well, green living is alive and well at Loyola Marymount University. The campus is such a good steward of the environment, it's receiving a top award from the city of LA, which likes to encourage businesses and schools to recycle. Anna Marcos has more on what the Recicla Awards mean.
You're looking at a campus where students, staff, and teachers all recycle 84% of their waste, where they also practice composting and growing things, as well as donating to the needy.
At our campus, we have our own recycle plant that sorts and sells material.
Loyola Marymount University has clinched the city's Platinum Star Recicla Award. It's the first time the city hands out the Platinum Award, the highest given to businesses and institutions for their recycling efforts.
LMU is a great example of what businesses and schools should do to look at what waste they generate.
And we are trying to make that future cleaner and greener, specifically with this group here by reducing our dependence on the landfill.
LMU even has a clean garden that teaches students how to grow their own organic fruits and plants like this lemon balm, which smells absolutely delicious. But wait till you see how they make these smoothies. They are serious about their environmental practices.
How about that? Pedaling your way to a smoothie on your own muscular steam.
What does it feel like to work for your smoothie here?
Well, it's sustainable. It's organic. I'm reducing a carbon footprint.
The university rates among the top campuses around the country for its attention to Mother Earth, and it has won numerous awards.
I guess we're the best recycling university in the country.
Meanwhile, the students, faculty, and staff have gotten really good at making some pretty mean smoothies. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Among the university's awards, it won last year's Recyclemania, a recycling tournament for universities across the country. It's also listed as a cool school by the Sierra Club. If you love the environment, every day is Earth Day. But that didn't stop the LA Department of Sanitation from putting on a big party to celebrate Mother Earth. Anna Marcos takes us to Earth Day LA.
So what do you do on Earth Day? Well, dancing on the grass sounds nice, or just finding a great big tree to lie underneath in on the grass works too. People may know them as trash collectors, but when it comes to a clean earth and clean water, LA's Department of Sanitation workers know their way around. And they know how to put up a heck of an Earth Day LA celebration.
You know them, you see them in your neighborhoods in their green trucks picking up your trash, but there's a lot more that they do for all of us besides just that. They take care of our sewer system and our wastewater system. They collect and clean our rainwater. They plant trees.
It used to be that the Department of Sanitation was about throwing things away, right? But today, it is about reusing all those things.
Workshops and exhibits focused on the earth-friendly, from learning how water is cleaned, filtered, and reused, to learning how to use mulch. Or how about a free oxygen-giving tree for your front yard? There were plenty of trees to choose from. Earth lovers even got a photo op with Mr. Recycle himself.
I decided to show up because I wanted to learn about better ways I could recycle and help the earth.
The city of LA has become a force in helping to green the environment. One big move for city leaders, pushing more biodegradable products to replace plastic.
Everyone here would not want to use a plastic straw if you knew it was going to end up in the nostril of a sea turtle and slowly kill that sea turtle.
We're talking now about moving towards zero waste as a, as a goal of ours.
To accomplish all this, you have to start them young. So how to get kids in on the conservation kick? Bring on the trucks.
It's really fun for the kids. They bring out the trucks and my little brother likes it. So that's why we came here, because he loves seeing a trash trucks on Tuesdays.
Well, at least someone loves those stinky garbage vehicles. And it looks like this festival just might have won these young minds over to loving Mother Earth as well. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
For more info on how to conserve and recycle, visit lacitysan.org. Mayor Eric Garcetti makes it easier for City of LA employees to report sexual harassment. A group of high school students gets high praise for their idea on battling homelessness. And you'll be seeing a lot more trees at one local park. All these stories in City Bee. Mayor Eric Garcetti signed off on new tools and processes to report and address harassment and discrimination by City of LA employees in the workplace. The mayor signed his 23rd executive directive, which builds on the city's existing harassment and discrimination policies and procedures by ensuring that any employee who encounters or experiences harassment or discrimination is able to easily report a complaint and feel confident that it will be properly investigated. The mayor also launched MyVoiceLA, a new portal that will enable current and former city employees, elected officials, and individuals who do business with the city to report harassment and discrimination online 24/7.
Let me be clear, in the city of Los Angeles, sexual harassment has no place in our workplace.
The mayor hands out a first-place award to this group of engineering students who stood out from the crowd for their innovative plan to help alleviate LA's homeless crisis. They were part of an Earth Day celebration at the Getty House, where LAUSD middle and high school students gave presentations on the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals. Garcetti tweeted that he loved hearing creative ideas from LA school students and that these young Angelenos are leading the way for a better future for LA and the planet. The winning group's project helps keep track of people who are homeless while connecting them to services and jobs.
We didn't just come here to present an idea, but to actually present a solution that could not be implemented only in our community, but as a nation as a whole.
The LA Dodgers joined city plants and middle schoolers from the Arroyo Seco Museum's science magnet in planting 60 trees in Sycamore Grove Park. The park is just five miles from Dodger Stadium and boasts picnic areas, walking paths, exercise equipment, and a historic ban shell. The new trees will help shade those amenities, making them even more pleasant to use. This project supports the ongoing reforestation efforts of the city to maintain and preserve our parks, which over the past few years have faced canopy decline due to dieout and a variety of climate issues. City Plants received funding for this project through a grant and has partnered with the Los Angeles Department of Recreation and Parks.
It is truly, truly important that we all plant trees in LA right now, because as we lose those trees, we need these young trees to grow up and take their place.
The Los Angeles Zoo welcomes some new furry friends to the fold. As Gil Reyes reports, meerkats are not camera shy and are waiting for you at the zoo.
Get your phone ready. Standing tall and posing for photos during much of the day are these new zoo arrivals, meerkats, seven of them. Hopefully, they will breed.
Through mesh, they were able to meet each other for a few days prior. We could kind of evaluate their behavior, make sure that they were going to get along. And then sure enough, as soon as we opened up the howdy mesh, they walked right through and, and they, they seemed like they already knew each other.
Meerkats and their expressive personalities are part of the mongoose family. They mainly come from southern Africa, but these recently arrived from zoos in Quebec and in Kansas to help increase the LA Zoo's dwindling population.
Stand all the way on their tippy toes and use their tail to help support their weight. And they'll do that as a lookout behavior or sentry behavior, where they're looking for predators in the area.
What do they eat?
They eat insects mostly, but at the zoo, we also give them fruits and vegetables. So here we have a very strong dominant female and then her two sisters. And then there's a dominant male as well that she is paired with. So those two hopefully will breed, hopefully will have pups in the next few months.
And you can meet this new furry mob made up of four males, three females, and more to come here at the LA Zoo's entrance. The zoo is open seven days a week. At your Los Angeles Zoo, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
You'll also find the meerkats hard at work digging a maze of holes and tunnels in their new habitat. Well, come enjoy a movie from a Hollywood rooftop, check out some cool rides during an annual community fun day, and support your local community at a local craft fair. All this and this week's Things to Do. The Montalban Theater is heating up this summer with several feature rooftop movie screenings. You can't be in a more scenic spot to sit back and enjoy movie classics and new releases with incredible views over the heart of Hollywood. The Montalban has a selection of food vendors, plus all of your favorite movie snacks like popcorn and soft drinks. Make sure to arrive early to enjoy the sunset and take the perfect selfie. The next screening takes place Wednesday, May 16th at 8:00 PM. Fire Station 65, One Community, One Cause, Councilman Joe Buscaino Watts, Neighborhood Council, and a host of community organizations have partnered together to promote community unity and present the 8th Annual Watts Community Fun Day and Car Show on Fire Service Day. Admission is free. The event includes a free pancake breakfast and a host of free festivities, live entertainment, car show, the Best of Watts Talent Competition, Jaws of Life Demonstration, free health screenings, vendor resource booths, Kid Zone, and much more. Join the fun for a day of unity, a family event for all ages to enjoy. The 8th Annual Watts Community Fun Day and Car Show takes place Saturday, May 12th from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM at Fire Station Number 65, located at 1801 East Century Boulevard. The Echo Park Craft Fair is a two-day art and design event in Silver Lake, featuring work by over 120 artists and drawing thousands of guests. The fair has become a pioneering showcase for the thriving makers movement. Featuring a meticulous curation of work from some of the finest artists in America, the fair celebrates innovators creating in a vast array of mediums, from ceramics to jewelry, perfumery to clothing design, woodworking to fabric art. Founded at the cusp of what is now a global trend toward the support of handcrafted and locally sourced, the Echo Park Craft Fair has evolved over nearly a decade, from a backyard pop-up to a vast community gathering. Seven years after its inception, the fair draws influencers and tastemakers, as well as national and international retail buyers, magazine editors, and stylists whom flock to the market to source products, ignite ideas, and fuel creative inspiration. The Echo Park Craft Fair takes place May 11th through the 13th from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM at the Mac Senate Studios located at 1215 Bates Avenue. For more, visit echo parkcraftfair.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
But it is Tuesday. Okay, so today's Tuesday, so we are going to start off with the flag salute. So if we can get everybody in council chambers to please rise. And we are going to be led today by Councilmember Mike Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. If everybody could join me in placing their hands over their heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. And this will be fair and final warning to Herman. You make another sound like that, you're going to be escorted out immediately. So you've been warned. All right, we have a special presentation. If we can please, Councilmember Blumenfield.
Great. Come on up, everybody. Bring everybody up. Colleagues, members of the public, I'm here today with Dr. Gassalia, Dr. Jane Rosner, Dr. Julia Sheehan, Dr. Ryan Bullock, Dr. David Decreek, Dr. Norma Camacho, and Kim Pearson. And they're with a variety of groups, the West Valley Hearing Center, Love Hearing Services, South Bay Hearing, and L.A. County Oceanside Lifeguard, Fidelity Hearing Center, Doctors of Hearing, and YDX USA. Anyone want to guess the theme?
Is there a doctor in the house?
Not just doctors, but we're talking about hearing. That's right, folks. Today, we are marking Better Hearing Month. Yes. Better Hearing Month.
Can you say that again?
I guess I set myself up for that one. But hearing loss, while we can make jokes, is a very serious matter. It's something that doesn't discriminate. No one is too healthy, too capable, too strong to avoid the loss of the ability to hear or to have that ability severely diminished. About 20% of Americans report hearing loss, and about two to three out of every thousand children are born with detectable hearing loss, according to the Hearing Loss Association of America. Hearing loss can be gradual and a slow process caused by a variety of things. It can be caused by loud noises, genetics, or just aging. Because hearing loss is an invisible illness, it's crucial that we speak out about this topic. So to everyone out in the audience listening on TV, please get yourself a hearing screening, get your hearing tested. When you do have hearing loss, the ability to get the right device to hear can change your life and be transformative. It can even save lives. The earlier adults, and especially children, detect signs of hearing loss, the better are the results and the better the treatment. Also know that if you or a loved one are experiencing hearing loss, there's hope. It's one of those issues that we often have, not necessarily a cure, but in some cases, a ways to handle it. One of the challenges that people experiencing hearing loss is facing the world with a hearing aid. Many feel a hearing aid is a loss of independence or can be a negative sign or detriment to their pride. The city of Los Angeles has the Department of Disability. Our Department of Disability can have a translator, an interpreter. As we can see right here in front of us, we have an interpreter today for folks who have hearing loss. There are plenty of hearing centers across Los Angeles, some of which are here today. And I'm going to introduce Dr. Amit Gassalia of the West Valley Hearing Center. We recently did a ribbon cutting for the opening of his practice in Woodland Hills. And it was actually his idea to be able to use this idea of a Better Hearing Month to bring awareness to this issue. So this Better Hearing Month proclamation is really his brainchild. So thank you, doctor. And I thought this would be a great way that we could honor that. And Dr. Gassalia, I think you've got a few things to say. So before I give this proclamation to you and the others, I'd like to give you the microphone.
Thank you. Good morning. I know I'm an audiologist, but I couldn't hear you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. Councilmember Blumenfield, President Wesson, and esteemed city councilmembers, I want to begin by thanking you for recognizing May as Better Hearing Month and allowing us to briefly speak with you today about an important issue, which is hearing loss. My name again is Dr. Amit Gassalia. I'm a board-certified doctor of audiology at West Valley Hearing Center in Woodland Hills. And I'm also the chair of the Public Awareness Committee for the American Academy of Audiology. And if you'd like to know more about the American Academy of Audiology, you can find more information at how'syourhearing.org. I'm also speaking on behalf of the California Academy of Audiology as one of its members. And you can find out more information at caud.org. For anyone who isn't familiar, audiologists are doctors who specialize in hearing and balance disorders. So I know Councilmember Blumenfield already introduced everybody. I want to do it one more time. Dr. Jane Rosner, owner and audiologist at West Valley Hearing Center, she's actually my boss. Dr. Julia Sheehan from Love Hearing Services in Pasadena. Kimberly Pearson, audiologist and regional sales manager at YDX USA. Dr. Ryan Bullock, board-certified audiologist at South Bay Hearing, and interestingly, also a Los Angeles County Ocean Lifeguard. He can save you in numerous ways. Dr. David Decreek, audiologist at Fidelity Hearing Center in Cerritos. And Dr. Norma Camacho, audiologist at Doctors of Hearing in Pasadena. Hearing loss is a major public concern, and it's the third most common physical condition after arthritis and heart disease. In 2016, the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs reported that the number-one service-connected disability was tinnitus, followed closely second with hearing loss. Believe it or not, PTSD was number three. Did you know that approximately three out of every 1,000 children in the U.S. are born with hearing loss? Currently, there are approximately 48 million Americans who report some degree of hearing loss. That's almost 15% of our population. Over the age of 65, that prevalence skyrockets to over 33%. Once an individual is diagnosed with hearing loss, the average person then waits over seven years to get help with their hearing issues. Typically, it's family, friends, or even coworkers who notice it first. So just doing the math, 15% of our population, that means 600,000 Angelenos suffer from some form of hearing loss. So what would you do if you learned that 600,000 of your constituents are suffering with a debilitating health issue? Well, as your constituents, we're confident you'd want to do something about it. Well, good news, there's help already available. Audiologists across the United States recognize Better Hearing Month in May to promote and spread awareness about hearing loss and better hearing. As you know, we, along with the rest of the audiologists of greater Los Angeles, the state of California, and audiologists nationwide, are ready to help. So we're excited for the Los Angeles City Council to show your support by coming to one of our offices, getting your hearing screened, in fact, even coming to one of your constituents who are present here today, and let us do a hearing screening for you. We'll do a complimentary screening for you. Thank you again for your time in recognizing Better Hearing Month, and we look forward to seeing you guys in our clinics.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right, let's give it up for them.
All right.
And let's give it up for Better Hearing Month, May 2018.
All right. Thank you very much for the presentation. Madam Clerk, if you could, please call the roll.
Blumenfeld, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio Anglender-Herstassen, Weezer Coetz, Krikorin, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, ten members present, and a coram, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Okay. Mr. Blumenfield moves, Mr. Bonin seconds. Next items, please.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Coetz moves, Mr. O'Farrell seconds. Next items, please.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue item nine to Friday, May 11th, in order to revise the recommendations to reflect the actions of the committee.
That item, without objection, that'll be the order. Thank you very much. Next items, please.
Items one through four are items noticed for public hearing.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and, I'm assuming we've got cards on all those items?
That is correct. Cards on all items.
All right, we'll hold those on the desk. Next items, please.
Items five through 22 are items for which public hearings have been held. For the record, on item 20, the correct address should read 2401 East Pacific Coast Highway. Additionally, there are requests from members to hold item 19 and 21 on the desk.
All right, then that'll be the order without objection and with that technical correction as well. Thank you very much. Next items, please. We can go ahead and take those items up then, so.
I'd like to hold a few items.
We're going to hold which one?
I'd like to hold, Mr. President, items 14, 21, and 22. And you're holding 20 already, right?
21.
20 as well?
And 20.
Did you want to hold the entire agenda, Mr. Buscaino?
Not necessarily, Mr. President.
Okay, just those items?
Yes.
It's a big day for us. And on the 19, you have that on the desk already for an amending motion, right?
And 19 for an amending motion.
Correct. So to summarize, we are holding 14, 19, 20, 21, and 22.
Correct. All right, we'll take the balance of those items up. Is there a balance? There's a balance. All right, so we'll take the balance of those items up. We'll go ahead and open the roll on the balance of those items. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote. Sorry? Yes. All right. Thank you very much.
And for the record, Mr. President, that ordinance will be held over one week.
Okay, one week without it. Okay, that'll be, unless we...
Unless we receive 12 members, correct.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Next items, please.
Items 23 through 26 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
We'll go ahead and open the roll for consideration. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And we have cards on all those items?
That is correct.
Of course we do. Okay. All right. And next items, please.
Mr. President, that takes council back to items called special or general public comment?
Okay, we'll go ahead and take the items called special. Those were all called special by Mr. Buscaino. Joe, did you want to take any of those in particular in order?
21 first.
21 first. Okay, we'll go ahead and take items 21.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this week, we are celebrating National Tourism Week, and we have before us a few presenters to talk about the impacts, the positive impacts, on our local economy that tourism makes in our great city, from passengers arriving and traveling through our airports to those who stay in our local hotels and shop and dine in our restaurants throughout the city of Los Angeles. So we have an exciting presentation in light of this National Travel and Tourism Week. The L.A. Tourism Convention Board is with us to present to us the 2017 economic impact numbers, and we're about to hear, again, the record-breaking numbers that have come through our great city. And we have also, as you may have read in the front page of the L.A. Times, the news that broke, the L.A. Convention Center will be moving forward on a $1.2 billion expansion, which will further increase our tourism numbers in years to come. And as the chairman of the Travel, Tourism, and Travel Committee, the Trade, Travel, and Tourism Committee, rather, I am clearly well aware of how much money we leave at the table, how much revenue we can be generating if indeed we had better facilities at our L.A. Convention Center. And clearly, our convention center is too small to compete with other national convention centers throughout the country. And this is why I support the expansion of the L.A. Convention Center and welcome AEG's proposals. So with that, before you, colleagues, you have the general manager of the Convention Tourism Department, Doan Lu, Ernie Wootton with the L.A. Tourism and Convention Board, and Javier Cano, who is a vice president of the JW Marriott. I'll turn it over to you for your presentation, and I know you have a few slides. And welcome, and real excited to share the amazing news and the excitement that's surrounded by our tourism industry here in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning, council. Honorable members of the council, we thank you for inviting us to present to you this morning. I'm Doan Lu, Executive Director of the Department of Convention and Tourism Development, a role I've had the honor of serving in for just over one year now. It's one of my responsibilities to make L.A. an even more attractive, competitive, convention, and tourist destination, and I believe we're making great strides forward. Thanks to your leadership on the council, in the last year, 3,800 new hotel rooms have been added to our lodging inventory, with another 3,200 rooms currently under construction. And we'd like to thank Councilman Weezer for his leadership in that effort. Thanks to your leadership, our city has broken ground on a $1 billion museum from filmmaker George Lucas, and debuted a state-of-the-art soccer stadium right next door. And we'd like to recognize Councilman Price for his leadership on that project, on those projects. And thanks to your leadership, last month, you all unanimously approved a contract to build the automated people mover at LAX Airport. We commend you as our city councilor for moving this forward, and like to recognize Councilman Bonin, Councilman Buscaino, for your leadership. This week marks National Travel and Tourism Week, an annual event established by Congress, and the perfect time to celebrate the power of tourism here in Los Angeles. I'd like to turn it over now to the man in charge of marketing and selling Los Angeles to travelers around the world, Ernest Wootton Jr.
Thank you very much, Doan, and good morning. A few months ago, I met with Mayor Garcetti and Councilman Buscaino at the LAX Airport, where we announced our 2017 visitation numbers. And at that meeting, in that presentation, we announced that for the seventh straight year, visitation to Los Angeles had grown to 48.3 million visitors. Well, I'm here today to share that this figure has now been revised finally upward by more than 160,000 persons, largely because of visitation from China and South Korea. So the new final numbers for 2017 are 48.5 million visitors. And more interestingly than the number of people was the amount of money they spent in Los Angeles, more than $22.7 billion. And I'm told that those monies being spent in hotels and restaurants, retail and more, blossomed to more than $34.9 billion when the implications that economists tell me, you must take in consideration as it floats across the county. So I'm fond of calling the tourism business "the hidden industry," but it is literally a $35 billion industry for Los Angeles. Without the tourism industry, we've calculated that every Angeleno would pay an additional $837 per year in taxes. That's critical, and I believe that Angelenos fully understand how valuable tourism is. In fact, in a recent Tourism Board study that we conducted, more than 97.5% of the people, over 1,000 people that responded, said that they felt positively about tourism and its impact on Angelenos. The transit occupancy tax, which is of key importance to this body, has grown at a compound average rate of more than 12.1% since 2011. This is an enormous undertaking. 12.1% compound annual growth makes travel and tourism taxes, if my numbers are correct, the fastest-growing source of revenue for the city of Los Angeles. In fact, last year, the transit occupancy tax amounted to close to $284 million. And with everyone's, having budgets on everyone's mind, we think that this is a major contributor toward the health and the benefit of our city. I'd like to now share the stage with Javier Cano, who sits on the board of the Tourism Board.
Thank you very much. Good morning, I'm Javier Cano, and I do sit as a board member of the L.A. Tourism. I'm also the chairman of the Tourism Marketing District, which is comprised of hotels with 50 or more rooms within the city of L.A. 50 or more rooms within the city of L.A. With your support, the Tourism Marketing District has been a critical element in expanding L.A.'s ability to market the destination and compete on a global scale. As vice president and general manager at the Ritz-Carlton Los Angeles and the J.W. Marriott at L.A. Live, I'd like to take a moment to highlight the profound impact that tourism has had on jobs across Los Angeles. Tourism supports more than 523,000 Angelenos within leisure and hospitality, one of the area's largest and strongest sectors. It means that one out of every 8.5 workers across every region depends on tourism. Last year, tourism contributed to the addition of nearly 14,000 new jobs within leisure and hospitality, making it the second-largest job creator overall. I want to take a moment to recognize the half-million hard-working Angelenos within our hospitality community, our city ambassadors, for their everyday passion and dedication that makes Los Angeles such an inspiring and welcoming destination to visit. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Javier. I'd like to conclude by sharing that the Tourism Board remains laser-focused on growing international visitation to Los Angeles. Why international? They are our best customers by far, and they stay the longest. Last year, we shared that our reevaluated forecast at that time indicated that there was a potential loss of international visitation because of the rhetoric coming out of Washington, D.C. The Tourism Board moved very quickly to establish that Los Angeles was a very special place, and we went around the world globally, welcoming people from around the world to Los Angeles. And we're proud to say that finally, when we tabulated the number of visitors that we gained and lost from international visitors, more than 7.3 million visitors came to Los Angeles, exceeding our worst forecast. That exceeding was done mainly on the back of a welcoming message that we shared with you last year, a message that we know strongly resonated around the world. In Mexico, for example, the local newspaper said, "Los Angeles teaches the United States how to treat its neighbors." In Norway, they said, "Bravo, Los Angeles," to our welcoming message. So fueled by this huge success, we've evolved the "Everyone is Welcome" campaign this year with brand-new contact content, and it will be our main marketing campaign for 2018. It's a message that entwines one of humanity and hospitality, encouraging visitors to see the diversity of faces and places, which make Los Angeles the very special place where we live and work. I'd like now to share with you, because you won't see much of this internally in Los Angeles, because we do this around the world to bring people in, our latest creative that we're promoting across all of our channels internationally. And we have a quick video that I'd like to share with you.
That was impressive, and the fact that Doan made all those paper airplanes.
One by one.
Amazing.
But off-script just a little bit, as I travel the world in supporting and merchandising Los Angeles, I can't tell you how important and what a beacon of light Los Angeles is seen at, as, because of our diversity and our freedom and everything that we stand for. It goes even beyond the natural things that we have to share with people in the destination. It's this image, it's this philosophy that we have that draws people to us. And it all lends itself to helping us get to this enormous goal of more than 50 million people by 2020. I think we will announce in short order that we will reach our eighth consecutive year of tourism growth, and that's largely because of all of the efforts collectively of city council, our partners that are investing billions of dollars, our transportation structure. We are now one of the top destinations in the world, right up there with London and Paris and Singapore and Beijing, and I think that we're going to even exceed all of those people in short order. We're very appreciative of your time this morning, and once again, we thank you for your continued support of tourism and the commitment to making Los Angeles the world's most desirable destination. Councilman Buscaino.
Thank you, Ernie. Thank you so much for your presentation and leadership here at the table and beyond. I see Patty McDermott's here, her and her team really being on the forefront of promoting our city. And that video, colleagues, really just touches at your heart. The fact that, in my role at the National League of Cities, I've heard from my colleagues throughout the country how the silly travel ban has really taken an impact in tourism in cities across the country, but not here in Los Angeles, as indicated in that amazing video. So the fact that what you've done to address the fact that here in Los Angeles, everyone's welcome from around the world, has had an impact, and we know that tourism has an impact in our local economy, as I mentioned, one in nine jobs, Ernie? One in nine jobs in this region, very similar to our port. You can contribute or attribute that to, those jobs, to the tourism industry, and whether, you know, our visitors head to the Valley and visit the Discovery Cube, or take a stroll along the boardwalk at Venice Beach, or visit our museums along Wilshire Boulevard, or head to downtown Los Angeles or the Hollywood Walk of Fame, or visit the Watts Towers, and make their way down to the L.A. waterfront and visit the battleship Iowa, the Korean Friendship Bell, or have the best seafood in the country at the San Pedro Fish Market. We welcome everyone, and all corners of our city benefit from our tourism efforts, and we congratulate you. And today, we pause and reflect on the work that you all do, and will continue to do. I also want to recognize colleagues here on the committee, as well as Mayor Garcetti's leadership, for helping make this all possible. So thank you for your presentation. Thank you, colleagues.
We've got a job for you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, we did have a couple other speakers, if you guys want to hang out for a sec. Mr. Coetz and Mr. Bonin?
Yes, I wanted to address the folks that were at the table.
Come on back, sorry about that. We had a different screen up that didn't show the speakers.
Sorry.
And first, I want to commend you in what I think is a brilliant marketing campaign, especially considering what we face from our federal government, which has the opposite message, stay out, we don't want you here, we're banning you, we're putting up a wall. And we have obviously the opposite, the welcoming message that everyone is welcome and treasured when they're here. What I'm wondering is, have we seen any negative impact from what in essence is a huge national, international marketing campaign to send people the message to stay out? Because I had, I honestly had assumed we wouldn't see these kinds of numbers despite our good work, and we are. But are we hearing from anyone that they stay away from the entire United States, including Los Angeles, because of the federal government and its approach?
Well, it's, what has happened over the last year and a half, and we appreciate your comments, Councilman, it has been extraordinary. The United States as a whole has lost market share in terms of international visitation over the last couple of years. In absolute numbers, the growth has been about 2.3%, I think it's, I think the latest numbers are. In our case, our growth has, in absolute numbers, been about 3.5%. But in specific answer to your question, it's a little bit uneven. As you might imagine, certain parts of the world are not offended by those comments at all, China, for example. India are not offended. They're kind of used to an authoritarian kind of government. Other places are significantly impacted negatively, Mexico, for example, the Middle East, which as of right now is not one of our biggest markets, so we've been able to capitalize and fish where the fish have been. We've recognized what we're up against, but I'm proud to say that in the case of Mexico, for example, this video that we showed around the world, which has had over 2 billion impressions, more than 17 million people have watched the whole thing in Mexico and have responded favorably to us. And so our numbers from Mexico have not seen the kind of impact that we, our economists, thought would happen, because they really do think of Los Angeles as this beacon of light. We're very, we're the other United States, and we want to continue to promote that idea.
That's interesting, because I would have thought China would be the most likely to react negatively, because not only everything we've done, but also with the trade things that we're doing as well. It seems like we're, as a government, we're doing anything we could to insult them, but presumably what we're doing in L.A. is offsetting that.
Yeah, we did a sentiment survey in Beijing to ask this very question. There's a sense of safety, the Chinese feel a sense of safety because of this sort of authoritarianism, which is good, which is good at the end of the day. So our numbers from China will continue to grow exponentially. We've got great relationships. Los Angeles currently now has four offices in China, where we exploit the travel opportunities every day, but they do feel very favorably about Los Angeles.
Well, continue your great work. We all appreciate it in these difficult times especially.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for the presentation, all three of you. I really enjoyed the video. I want to commend you for the way you've really stepped up your game on marketing Los Angeles. Patty knows I've been complaining about too much Santa Monica, not enough Venice for a very long time, but what struck me and impressed me here is, I remember a few years ago, while I was on the council, there was an advertising campaign for Los Angeles that I felt was marketing Los Angeles as the place where 30-somethings drank Appletinis on the Sunset Strip. And this looks much more like the Los Angeles that all of us know, and I think is a much better image for Los Angeles. So I want to thank you for that and urge you to continue that good work. Also, you know, I represent an area that gets a lot of tourists. I have the airport, I also have Venice Beach, so, you know, I spend a fair amount of time reading Yelp reviews of what people think about their experience at our airport or experience at Venice Beach. And one thing historically I've seen people complain about is the lack of transit options. We're working very hard now to change that, thanks to the voters with Measure R and Measure M. But one thing I keep hearing from people, either anecdotal or even online, is shock, dismay at the homeless situation in Los Angeles. You know, you take a stroll on the boardwalk and you see encampments now. So whenever there's an opportunity to expand the convention center, or whenever there's an opportunity to build more hotel rooms, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the hospitality industry, all rallies together, turns out here and puts a lot of pressure on us. I want to invite you, and I don't mean just the three of you, but everybody that you represent, to turn out similarly in our districts when we're building permanent supportive housing, and when we're building out the Bridge to Home program that Mayor Garcetti has proposed. Because if we really want to continue to thrive as a hospitality city with tourism, we have to end this crisis and have to stop being a city of tents and encampments, and that's going to be hard for all of us. And we need you to be part of that. Just as you want us to be part of building the hotel rooms, we need you to be part of building the permanent supportive housing and the shelter.
I will pledge our support, the entire tourism community. This is, as you say, a very difficult problem, which is now slowly seeping into our studies, where they are pointing to homelessness as being a barrier, but the city of Los Angeles has done some mighty powerful things over its history. I will share with you, when I'm in China, for example, they point to our history in the world of smog, and how we have improved things over the last 25 years, as being a case study for them that they can do it, L.A. did it, we can do it. So I think the world is looking at how we treat this very sensitive subject, and I will tell you that the Tourism Board and all of us in tourism support, in any way we can, this resolution.
Excellent. Thank you very much. That concludes, the speaker's on the queue. Thank you all for being here, and look forward to hearing more about the 1.2 million square feet of the convention center in the near future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, with that, colleagues, okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll on that item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, and Councilmember Buscaino on item 22.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this is an exciting item before us, Ms. Rodriguez. I think about your kids, I think about our kids here, our grandkids, I know some of us on the council have a few grandkids as well. This is a game-changing for our city and for the Harbor Area communities. What's before you is a lease agreement between the Port of Los Angeles and SpaceX to move to berth 240 at the former 18-acre, former Southwest Marine Terminal, where my Uncle Joe once built ships there. Where with your approval today, we're going to start building spaceships at this terminal. And with up to 700 employees SpaceX will be bringing to the Harbor Area communities. It will be conducting production development on the largest rocket ship ever known, the Big Falcon Rocket. Well, colleagues, with your approval for our city, this will be a Big Falcon deal. The addition of SpaceX at the Port of L.A. is creating a new floodgate for our economy, landing ground for innovation, and with 700 employees coming to this area, and with the redevelopment of the new San Pedro Public Market, can you picture, imagine ferrying 700 employees from the new San Pedro Public Market across the terminal, Mr. Marquis Herstassen, to the new SpaceX terminal? This, what's taking place today, really can add to our local economy and our effort to rebuild a new downtown San Pedro. Proximity is everything. With these new 700 employees, people will be able to live, work, eat, play, dine, in the historic downtown San Pedro core. So for your consideration, I'd like to queue up a two-minute video, and it's an overview of what's to come in the beginning of a long partnership between SpaceX and the city of Los Angeles.
In late 2015, we were approached by SpaceX for some land to build rockets, and the rockets were going to be very large, which would not allow them to move them the traditional way, which is by truck, to their launch pad. Therefore, they needed property with water access. We identified a 19-acre parcel that was sitting fallow since 2005 that once homed the Southwest Marine Shipyard.
So the first aspect of this project, of course, is our lease negotiations, and then we're going to go into the building phase of this project. It's an 80,000-foot building that's 80 feet tall... It's an 80,000-foot building that's 80 feet tall, with no columns on the inside of the building. It's a big hangar. And when we add onto it, it'll be, it'll wind up being a total of a 200,000-square-foot building. I drove all around the place, and I found this property, and I looked at it, and that was like the perfect spot for us.
We drive the economy, and most of the stuff we focus on are the industries and the growth of today. But we also have to plant the seeds for tomorrow, so we are bringing SpaceX to the Port of Los Angeles.
Having been in this industry now 28 years, I know that access to space is hard, but it's critical to not just our industry, but to the nation as a whole. I also say the project solidifies our role as a spaceport. I've talked about that before when we were offloading Falcon 9 out of 22nd Street, pretty exciting. Puts us on the map as a contributor to the exploration of the final frontier that is space. And I think it is an amazing opportunity for all of us to say we are part of it.
This, colleagues, clearly is history in the making here. And I do want to recognize Gene Soroka, under the guidance and leadership of Mayor Garcetti, for being forward-thinking and looking at this site that has been vacant for decades, and being more forward-thinking on finding a way to, to bring SpaceX to our port. I also want to recognize Jack Hedge, Mike DiBernardo, Brett Horton from SpaceX, and of course Elon Musk, who believes in our city, believes in this project, and on behalf of the residents of not only my district, but this entire city, we thank Mr. Musk for moving forward and investing in our city. So, you know, I gave my state of the district last week at Altacay, which will, is on its way forward in creating the nation's premier blue tech hub. And now with your vote today, with SpaceX landing at the Port of Los Angeles, San Pedro will be known as the epicenter for both sea and space exploration. I ask for your aye vote. Thank you.
All right, so with that, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Congratulations on the Big Falcon vote. All right, so with that, we'll go ahead and, let's go ahead and take some items for public comment. We'll go into multiple speakers first. Gus, come on up.
And, Mr. President, as the speakers make their way forward, an amending motion for item 19 has been circulated and posted for council's consideration.
Good morning, Councilmembers Daniel, Gus. I contribute to City Watch LA. And regarding number three, $35,000 for Council District 10, as I alerted Mr. Faubel earlier this morning. City Council last week had indicated that, this is Mr. Krikorians and Mr. Englanders' words, that Jews control the city's shekel. So according to you, if you don't get this money approved, consult with the Jews on City Council, according to Mr. Englander, and according to each of you who failed to object to it. Item number 24. It's kind of curious, why is the black district getting less money than the Korean and black district? African-Americans in the city of Los Angeles, you're getting a sliver of the money for the same function as the Korean and black district. Mr. Harris Dawson's shaking his head, no, but the numbers are there. Consult with the Jews on City Council, according to Mr. Englander.
All right, thank you very much. Your time is up. Have a seat. Next speaker, please.
No general.
Sean? That was your general public comment. Thank you.
What's the mobile items?
One, two, three, four, one, two, three, and four.
Item one, I am against. Item four, I am against. General public comment. News media, social media, some, something's going to happen. We're getting a new pastor July 1st at St. Charles Barrios Catholic Church. It is a big deal. Monsignor Gallagher will be retiring. I invite the City Council to please show up. My friend will be sending an email to you.
Thank you, Sean. Herman, come on up. Armando, you know all the rules? Not going to say them again. You're on items one, two, three, four, 23, 24, 25, and 26. A.
So now that we're dealing with another series of robberies in CD 12, is it ironic that we have speed racing up in CD 12? Where's the elected official who protects us from robberies? Where is the grunt city official that's supposed to protect us from our sanctuary cities? Where is the public official on item number 25, Mr. Folker or Fucker, Falconfield? I'm dealing with the identification and apprehension of a particular robber. One is, he's not black, because you heard the first speaker before me. No, it's not a Korean. No, that's not the robberies. The robberies is dealing with the impact of a negative city going downhill, and people need jobs. So how do you create jobs? You commit robberies. And not that anyone was going to think out someone for stealing for a living, because it's good business. Still from your neighbors, but never from your family. Still from your family, and you'll never come back home. That's robbery. Just like I was at the Police Commission this morning, talking about the reward on robberies, but no one cares to listen. We were kicked out because of Waukesha Wilson's name. What was my other item, Mr. Chair?
All right, so again, you had.
Yeah, yeah, 23.
One, two, three, four, 23, 24.
When dealing with Assembly Bill 1290 is like dealing with Assembly Bill 107, series of crimes, 1192.7, is a serious crime. And then we go to Ben Carson District. Mr. Carson himself, Chair of Plum, and we're asking for supplemental charter bus services. While we don't need charter bus services, we have Metro. And Metro provides us with the fastest type of service to get you around Los Angeles, as you heard in the presentation of Joe Busciano in the port. So why do we need additional jobs to create, in the 8th District, a city purpose funding, when we have ample of jobs in the port? Which is in CD 8, where Mr. Ben Carson, Sleepyhead Dawson, is unaware that the Koreans are getting the charter buses and the African-Americans are not. Now my general public comment. As you hear, the port is dealing with new jobs, bigger fucker Falconfield jobs. And who are the fuckers without the jobs? The fucker agolinos that are sitting behind me with the vest on who have no jobs, and demand jobs, higher-paid jobs, not the disgruntled jobs that Conabi and Allen and Englander attempts to disarm the city in stealing our public funds. And not to mention also 14141, government code. Why the fuck this racist city continues to bring harm to the homeless people, Mr. Rue? Stop feeding the Koreans about HHH for homelessness. We all deserve homes. Even the hard-working people deserve homes. But you white nigger, keep your comments to your Korean family and shut the fuck up.
All right, thank you very much. Your time is up. Mr. Herman, the next speaker, please.
What?
You're done. Now you're disrupting the meeting.
What?
Okay, sergeants, please escort him out. I've told you all the warnings, I've told you everything, you know the rules. We'll just wait for, okay, don't, don't, just keep walking. Keep going.
And as usual, Mr. Herman is disrupting the meeting as he very slowly makes his way out, shouting as he does it, so we can't continue our business. And he's still shouting slurs as he leaves.
John Walsh, please go ahead and make your way down.
Just for the record, in case the mics aren't picking it up, he's continuing to spew hate speech as he leaves the room.
Mr. Walsh, you're on items 24, 25, and 26.
I put it in separately. 24, charter buses, who cares? It goes to a favored charter company. Rewards? You can take all these rewards and shove them up your butt, because you never pay them out. Again, I want, if I'm wrong, say, Mr. Walsh is wrong, we paid out $700,000 in the past year for rewards. You can't say that, because it's not true. Remember, the camera saves me. Otherwise, you'd be throwing me out. And then maps, watch out for these maps. They change it, they change your zoning, and all of a sudden, there's a huge apartment building next to you. That's what happens, and everybody knows it. Final maps. Well, final until the next set of maps, till the next set of developers pay you off. As far as, I'll go to my, my one minute. Glenn Dake. Now, if I say that Glenn Dake is the mayor's lover here, you can't do anything about it, because that camera saves me. Remember, a couple of hundred years ago, they were lynching Negroes left and right, until somebody invented the Brownie. They took a picture, the Chicago Defender published a picture, and it's, after that, the number of Negroes that were lynched plummeted because the camera. And they, and they didn't leave, the Klan did not leave the, them to twist in the wind, the, the Negroes. They left, they left them to twist in the wind. But now afterwards, they cut them down. They cut them down. And I'm telling you right now, all these white people who think Donald Trump is going to be the answer, the answer, the future is yellow.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, you're done. Thank you. All right, next speaker, please. Noel Weiss.
Counsel, good morning. Thank you, Mr. Bonin, for raising the issue of homelessness. It's unfortunate that nobody else on this council stood up. Mr. O'Farrell, I mean, apparently is not here. My comments are directed both to his issue. First, Mr. Harris Dawson, thank you, counsel, for passing his tenant relocation fee. He's taking care of his people, unlike Mr. O'Farrell. We've got, you guys, obviously you don't own the seats, you rent them, but nevertheless, you're powerful. One call to applicants, one call to property owners can basically solve a problem. Don't, don't screw with my people, should be the essence of that call. Mr. O'Farrell was told in a rare letter from the City Planning Commission of inhabitable conditions at the West Franklin property that's being developed in his district. It directed directly to him, he never responded to that situation. He's not here now to listen to public comment. He's basically hiding. Whether his indifference is callous and, and, and purposeful, or whether or not it's otherwise, we don't know. I want to make an oral public records request for his records relative to this project.
Thank you very much. Your time is up. So we're going to go ahead and, Patricia McAllister, thank you so much for being patient. You've been very quiet today. You are on items 23, 24, and 25.
Okay, let's start with 23. Herb Weston, he's asking for $35,000 for some buses. That's a lot of money, when Harris Dawson is only asking for 7,000. So I need, think we need an investigation with Herb Weston on this $35,000, and we don't want the people bussed to these casinos, okay? That's why we have a lot of people on the street. They have gambling problems. Now, 25, that's about trying to catch some people who rob in the city. You got a lot of nerve, you declared it's sanctuary. Sanctuary, they got full, they can do what they want to do. What do you mean, you want, now you want to pay somebody to help find them? And then once you put them in jail, you're going to let them loose, so they can go back out in the street and rob some more? You guys are crazy. We want people in their communities to get out there and learn how to run for office and run for these seats in here, run for these, in your district. We will vote for you. We will, as long as their names are not on the ballot, we will vote for Mickey Mouse, anybody, except these people here. Now Harris Dawson, he wants 7,000. I think he should get the $7,000. And take the people to different events that's going to elevate the community, okay? Positive events on how to buy houses that are foreclosed on, things of that nature, but not to casinos, please. Now, give me my one minute, please. I think that the fact that this city, this state, and this country allowed 35 million illegal aliens to come into this country and have 20 million babies, and then you gave the babies the status of the slave children. The slave children, in the Constitution, said that any slave who had children, those children were automatically citizens. You gave our status to the illegal aliens to overtake the black community. That's why you've got a curse. You can do whatever you want to do, and I've been talking, 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 but I don't think I need to, because you're under a curse. You are under a curse for replacing black people and giving these people their status of black people. It's a shame, it's racist, and as far as I'm concerned, I've done my research, I'm a teacher. The Jews were the ones behind slavery. And don't tell me I don't know what I'm talking about. They financed slavery, those banks, Wells Fargo, all of them were started in slavery. And matter of fact, there's in the books, Jews wrote laws to keep blacks under slavery. And those same Jews are trying to struggle, destroy blacks today. But you're going down first, not us.
All right, Donna, come on up on item 25 and general public comment.
Good to see you again. And we have the high, we have the highest robberies because of high sales tax and cost of food and low employment rates causes some, some people, especially in the mental, to commit robberies. Makes our, you make our city thrive, and make our citizens thrive, and no sanctuary city, and, because sanctuary city is making it bad, so then you'll see those series of robberies. And so it's, anyways, not, no one's going to give you information on this, because they don't want to get themselves killed, so that $15,000 is not worthwhile enough. So what we need is, I said, make the city thrive, make employment back again, especially for the, the American citizens, like the whites and the blacks, and, and naturalized citizens, and they need to be able to have the jobs. And now I'm going to go on my public comment. First, I should be in band eyes by video conference today, but you don't believe in the First Amendment speech or fairness to disabled. I want to ask our voters of Los Angeles, do you really, do you want to spend billions on the bullet train? Do you really want the highest gas tax when the effects of your driving and trucks, the shipping, like your groceries, make them higher? Do you want the highest sales tax, which is mostly misused? And the liberal Democrats have their way, we'll get around Proposition 13 and highest property tax. Why can't going on under taxes? You know, the utility tax. What you need to do is vote Republican. Richard Benito's for Assembly 39. Burnett, Burnett, Benito Burnell, Nak Cardenese, Mark Reed, Travis Allen for governor. And I can't remember all the Republicans' names. If you see a Republican on your ballot, check his, his or her name for the party. It's for you, you need to do it.
Thank you very much. So go ahead and, colleagues, we're going to turn our attention back to the agenda for a second, so we're going to go ahead and take the open items, one through four. So we'll go ahead and open the roll on items one through four, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Eleven ayes. And those ordinances will be held over one week to May 15.
Great, thank you very much. And 23 to 26, we'll take those next. We'll go ahead and open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Thank you very much. Oh, okay, Councilmember Buscaino, we still have three being held on the desk.
Item 20.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take item 20. Did you want to speak on it?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Well, colleagues, earlier in council, we supported the port's recommendation to move forward on item 22, the SpaceX, which I wholeheartedly agreed with and acknowledged and praised the port for moving forward. And like a family, we may not agree on everything that comes to committee and council, and this item before us on the extension, the one-year extension of the federal trade zone, I wholeheartedly do not agree with. And this is why I'm asking your consideration by exerting authority and sending this recommendation back to the Port Commission. Last June, USA Today published an investigative report, a one-year-long investigative report about the trucking industry, and that serves the Port of Los Angeles in Long Beach. And before you have a number of port truck drivers, please rise and be recognized. And I agree with what USA Today identified these port truckers before you. They've been forced into debt, they've worked past exhaustion, and they have been left with nothing. And that's completely outright wrong. Just think, immigrant community, I see these faces, and I see my parents, who immigrated from Italy for the work that provided at the Port of Los Angeles. In November, our Trade, Travel, and Tourism Committee held a special field hearing at the Port of Los Angeles and heard firsthand from these port truckers and warehouse workers. And I was appalled by the stories that myself and Mr. Bonin heard and vowed to do all I can to end this modern-day sharecropping occurring on public property. Calcartage is a logistics company that operates two trucking companies and a warehouse on port property in Wilmington. And on April 5, the Harbor Commission approved a one-year operating agreement with Calcartage, allowing the company to operate their warehouse on Pacific Coast Highway as a forward trade zone, giving the company significant financial incentives by reducing and deferring custom duties and taxes. How can we incentivize a company that is treating its employees like crap? It's not going to fly with me, and it shouldn't fly with you. Section 12.02 of the operating agreement requires a zone to be operated in accordance with applicable federal, state, and local laws. And the port's Foreign Trade Zone Tariff II, which sets the rules and regulations for all FTZs at the port, states, "No operation or process of treatment will be permitted in the zone that, in the judgment of FTZ Board, C, BP, or grantee," which is the Harbor Commission, "is detrimental to the public interest, health, and safety." Well, they clearly came to our committee and shared with us how much of an impact they're having on their wages, lost wages, and its impact in, obviously, their lives, and this is why I don't support this. As documented in the council file, Calcartage has been cited by Cal-OSHA numerous times for safety violations and EDD, for failing to pay disability insurance benefits, and there are pending cases before the National Labor Board relations, California Department Labor Standards Enforcement, and ongoing DOJ investigation for failing to pay prevailing wage and a private class action lawsuit. So knowing that, even though we have an investigation that's pending with potential violations, how can we move forward on extending Calcartage another year? Furthermore, I want to thank our city attorney, Mike Fuhrer, for following our leadership by filing a lawsuit on behalf of the people of California against the three trucking companies owned by Calcartage alleging unfair business practices. I also want to thank the leadership here in this council, Mr. Blumenfeld, when he once chaired the committee, raised this issue, Mr. Corretts and Mr. Bonin, who has deep concerns over how these truckers are being treated. So with that, I ask that you support sending this back. I want to thank Ms. Rodriguez for pinch hitting for us in the Trade, Travel, and Tourism Committee while Mr. Bonin was tending to the budget and supporting this as well.
We do have a speaker on the queue as well.
Thank you. Turn to the speakers.
Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Buscaino, for bringing this forward. Unfortunately, this isn't a new issue. When I was chair of the Assembly Labor Committee back in 2006, we had a hearing on exactly this same issue. These same bad practices were going on 12 years ago, and if anything, they've just gotten worse. So it's time we stood up for the workers and attempt to address it, and I think this is a good first step, and I thank you, Mr. Buscaino, and colleagues, for moving this forward.
All right, Mr. Blumenfeld.
I'll be brief. I just wanted to support Mr. Buscaino in bringing this forward. It's a bold step. We are supporting our workers. This is something we've been working on together since when I was chair of the committee, and, you know, this is a statement. It's an important statement that we care about our workers, and thank you for bringing it forward, and I support you 100% and support our workers 100%.
Councilmember Bonin.
Thank you, and thanks to Mr. Buscaino for bringing this forward, and even more importantly, thanks to those of you who are here today who have been impatiently and insistently demanding action on this. Colleagues, this is not only the right thing to do, but this is an important object lesson in the importance of not listening to no when it is the answer you hear when we try to do something to protect our workers or we try to do something big. The people who are standing here today have been victims of all sorts of horrible exploitation and economic oppression. And they turned to the city of Los Angeles and to the port and said, "Please help us." And for a very long time, the answer they kept hearing was no, and they did not give up. They kept insisting and demanded a yes. They hounded people and insisted that this city fulfill its obligations to the people who were working on city property to do right by them. And it was important for Mr. Buscaino and I to have that hearing down there, important to hear that, and important to echo their insistence that no is not the right answer. And attorneys said no for a very long time, and eventually, they heard it, and they said yes. And now, we're proceeding in solidarity with the plan of action, and it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Buscaino.
Thank you. I just want to conclude by addressing the critics and those in the industry that are saying, "Well, this is an effort to unionize port truckers." And let me be clear, there are credible port trucking companies that take care of their employees, and those employees are happy, and they're providing food for their family, and they are making a good living. There are a few bad actors, like the one that's before us today, that need to be held accountable. And in addition to those bad actors, we're calling on the retailers, too, to step up and address this issue. In fact, the resolution that I'm introducing today, sponsored by Senator Lara, Senate Bill 1402, would make retailers who contract with trucking companies jointly liable for any abuses of port truck drivers, including, but not limited to wage theft, misclassification of drivers, and imposing unlawful expenses. So let me say this. You have council members here, standing before you, who have your back and will continue to fight for your rights. God bless you, and I ask for your eye vote and send this back to the Port Commission.
All right, thank you very much, colleagues. With that, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Okay, Joe, we've got 14 and 19. We're holding on the desk for you, so don't go anywhere.
Sorry.
This is the Joe Buscaino Show today.
It is, it's a busy day for us here.
Joe Day in L.A.
So what do you want to do, Mr. President?
Well, it's...
Let's do 14.
You got it.
So item before you, 14, I do want to recognize Chairman of the Tea Committee, Mr. Bonin, and his colleagues on the committee, for moving forward on this idea of a cycle track loop in Wilmington, which will create another barrier between the heavy industrial traffic and the community. So this loop would create more park-like space, more opportunities to plant trees, and create a much safer environment and buffer zone on the streets where 21 pedestrians, one cyclist, and two motorists have been killed in just the last five years. So traffic crashes, get this, traffic crashes are the number-one killer of children under 14 in the entire county of Los Angeles. They surpass gang-related homicides. So just think of our kids in Wilmington that has to deal with heavy trucks coming in and out of their neighborhood. This cycle track idea is the least we can do to make Wilmington more safe and help lessen the effects of living in the most industrial neighborhood in the city. Infrastructure like a cycle track gives more value to a business district. We saw this when Sicla Via came to Wilmington. People were coming out of their homes, businesses were booming when bikes hit the streets. And just ask the owner of Santa Luna Restaurant, Chef Antonio Castaneda, or Alma Nacho Ortiz at Ojas Tea House. Sevilla, Spain recently built 50 miles of protected bike lanes throughout the city at a cost of $42 million, and even though lots of people didn't ride bikes there before the bike infrastructure was built, today, that protected bike lane serves 70,000 daily trips, proving that if you build it, they will ride. When you compare the per-mile cost of a dedicated bike lane per mile of a metro train, which is $1 billion, you start to understand what a bargain the cycle track is. And while Wilmington has the highest concentration of bike lanes in the state of California, they have the most bike lanes in the city designated for most strong, fearless, aggressive cyclists, you often see Metro Bus ads reminding motorists to share the road with cyclists. So colleagues, I don't know, would you feel comfortable allowing your kids to share the road with L.A. drivers? Yeah, I wouldn't feel comfortable, I'll be honest with you. In fact, every Bike to Work Day, I take the, I leave downtown Pedro, Nury, and Mitch, and I, from downtown Pedro to downtown L.A., and thank God, I go to church the Sunday before to pray for my safety because it's not safe. Clearly, it's not safe. I've been killed, almost killed, three or four times. So I want to remind everyone that what we're doing here today is simply beginning a conversation. I want to recognize again the Tea Committee and ask that the Wilmington community step forward and give us some ideas as we move forward, working with the Department of Transportation, going to the Wilmington community and giving their input. So I ask for an eye vote. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. With that, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. And now, 19, called special by Joe Buscaino.
Just ask for support.
We'll go ahead and...
As amended.
Okay, as amended. We'll go ahead and open the roll as amended.
I'm done.
Close the roll.
You haven't heard from me in a month.
And tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And Jose, for general public comment? Come on up.
I have a list of requisites for several workforce developments, and some of them also fall into the issues with traffic dangers. And so, the first one is nocturnal transition for rush hour traffic and dividing some of that traffic because rush hour traffic can be dangerous because of the congestion in the streets. And I have Oshene agriculture investigation, poverty rehab centers, Arctic atmospheric nuclear turbines, Mascale Sahara Fertilization Coalition, NUC Martian Polar Regions, Middle Eastern Educational Entertainment Programs, Storytelling and Geopolitical Conflict Trauma and Survival Experiences with Sophisticated Animation for Television Broadcast. So these are some requisites that I've brought up to your attention because I feel they're an issue and oppressive matter for a lot of things that can be developed in the workforce industry and also for resolutions of geopolitical conflicts and society itself and the dangers into the streets. So I want to bring this up to your attention.
Okay, thank you very much. That's your one-minute time. All right, and so we have a request for item 20 to go forth with, so that'll be the order without objection. And Richard, come on up. How you doing, sir?
Honorable President, Members, Richard Robinson. The United States of America is the melting pot, a sanctuary. Sir, there's a lady standing on a pedestal in New York Harbor, a torch in her hand. At the base of the Statue of Liberty are these words, "Send me your homeless and those yearning to be free." California belonged to Mexico long before President Trump's family reached these shores. He wants to build a wall at the border and send hard-working natives back to Mexico. Millions of American natives yearning for freedom should be indeed allowed amnesty. Not deportation, thank you. It doesn't compute. I just can't see it, you know?
All right. Robert, no longer here? Is Ruben still here? Ruben is gone as well. And Tosh, Tosh, is no longer here. Okay, so that concludes all of the public comment. And that should clear the desk. We have items for posting and referral?
Yes, there are motions for posting and referral.
Okay, we'll go ahead and post and refer those. And colleagues, do we have any announcements? Seeing none, do we have any adjourning motions? I'm looking to my right. Yes? Okay, we can have everybody in council chambers, please rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Westwood neighborhood of Comstock Hills feels the loss of one of its enduring leaders, an activist for decades whose watchful eye and scientific approach to problem-solving made us feel fortunate that he was there, fighting the good fight. As an accomplished engineer, Charles Edelson could diagram transit roadways, worked on the Santa Monica Boulevard Parkway, wrote comments on every EIR that would affect our community, and became an expert on security issues for his neighborhood. One of his last great concerns was protecting the electrical grid. He worked with Council District Five to detail the grave dangers from an attack on the grid and measures that needed to be taken to safeguard our population. He was an extraordinarily giving man with a wry sense of humor and a passion for ballroom dancing, and he was still dancing in his late 80s. As Sandy Brown, president of Homeby Westwood, said, "Charles was a rare local hero and a great activist. Neighbors are planning to plant an oak tree in his honor, and we will miss him all very much." Also, I have a second adjournment for Pauline Skolnick, who was born in Boyle Heights on May 26, 1952. As an infant, she moved with her family to the Fairfax District, where she lived for nearly all of her life. She graduated from Fairfax High in 1970, graduated from CSUN in 1974, and she worked for a number of years in the medical field and insurance administration before spending the last 18 years as a member services representative for the Los Angeles Firemen's Relief Association. She loved to play the piano shop and spend time with her family and was always thinking of other people before herself. And Pauline is survived by her father, sister, brothers, their spouses, nieces, and nephews.
Thank you. Looking for any other adjourning motions on my right, seeing none. On my left, seeing none. That concludes this meeting. Colleagues, we are adjourned. Be safe. Thank you.